If I could make a motion to set the agenda, Board of Education meeting dated June 12th, 2023.
So, do you have a?
Alright.
Okay, thank you members of the Republican Party's board. It's so peaceful. They mean. You just get the bottom. As many of you know, I'm from. Teacher here at the President's Conference Education Association. I'm here tonight to congratulate the committee's administration team here at THG. The case very principal. Now, that's the principal. The teacher here at THG, I'm very excited to start the next team with a fresh start. And you have that new team. Look forward to having another new team and working. Thanks so much.
If I could like to take a motion to set the group, the Board of Education's regular meeting initiated March, it said May 8th, 2023.
Those who have.
I don't. If I could make a take a motion to set the group, the Board of Education's special meeting initiated May 24th, 2023. Alright.
Alright, stay.
Hello and good afternoon. Before I begin, I just wanted to say thank you for being here with me today, and I have an incredible honor and privilege to be in front of you all. Just to introduce myself really quick, my name is Emma Marble, or Emma Bama to my family, and Emmy Marv to my Feel Like teammates. I'm the second child of six and a daughter of two amazing parents. I'm a very musical person. I love to jam. I love to jamming to music in the car as well as singing and playing the piano. Since I was young, I have loved reading books. Most recently, I developed the hobby of making origami in my free time. Um, more things about me, I love the mango pineapple refreshers at Dunkin' and hate all forms of seafood. I enjoy the freedom of being able to drive and take myself places, but driving in new busy areas terrifies me, as does driving on ice and snow. Let me just say, it's probably a good thing that trees and driveways cannot talk. Love to travel and see new places and experiences things. I've been fortunate enough to have been to six different countries, and I hope to travel to many more. My favorite color is yellow, a soft shade of yellow, like the kind you might see on a tulip or daffodil. I love butterflies with their delicate beauty and bright red colors, their carefree nature and the brightness that they carry. I love my golden retriever Lucy, who is constantly asking for pets and chases after every deer she sees in the yard. And I love the hour-long walks I take out by the Black Rock Dam, where it's just me, my audiobook, and as this is New England, probably a few ticks here and there. Um, once somewhere, somewhere between third and fourth grade, my mom sat me down in front of her computer and told me to write a story. I was a kid who absolutely loved to read adventure and mystery books and make up stories for my own toys. When my mom sat me down to write a story, most amazing ideas which I write went through my head. Eventually, I settled on my idea, the story of a boy and a horse named Sun Star. In this story, a little boy who was around my age was visiting his grandfather's horse ranch for the summer. Shortly after he arrived, the grandfather showed the boy a horse. That was a chestnut colored and had a white star marking on its head. The grandfather told the boy that the horse was his for the summer, and the boy called the horse Sun Star. The grandfather gave the boy a saddle and all the tools and knowledge he would need, and that summer, the boy had wonderful adventures with his horse. I never finished that story. As a little kid, I probably lost interest after the first few days, but I can see how this little boy was a reflection of me. When I was little, I was obsessed with horses and dreamed of having my own and riding every day. A tradition my family has is that my dad told us every time we went through the Lincoln Tunnel in New Jersey, there are people to hold their breath all the way through the tunnel, then we would get a pony. Sadly, none of us ever made it. But you can be sure with that, we tried our very hardest. In the summer of 2020, when most of the world was closed down, my two sisters and I took writing lessons as small sable and cheshire. We learned all the basics, walking, trotting, turning, and maneuvering. One day in our lessons, my sisters and I were all on horses in the arena, practicing trotting and having our horses step over these slightly raised poles. While myself and my horse Fritz were trying towards the poles, he began to speed up and head straight toward the raised pole. I tried to slow Fritz down and deviate from this path, I realized that I was going to jump no matter what I did, so I tried to hang on as best I could. Practically, I did not fall off, and we went made it over safely. Looking back, I'm sure that we couldn't have been more than two feet off the ground, but to me in that moment, it felt like we are high above the earth. Um, in just a few months, I am heading out to the land of potatoes, otherwise known as Idaho, and going to Brigham Young University, Idaho. I'll be majoring in public health with an emphasis in health education and promotion, as well as a class from Spanish. I'm excited about going to college, but so nervous to be away from my family and the places that are so familiar to me. I know so little about Idaho, and while I will have family nearby, I'm scared that I'll not be able to handle college and make new friends. While writing this speech and coming back to that story I wrote when I was just a little girl, I have realized I am prepared. In my story, I talked about the boy's grandfather, gave him all the tools, knowledge, and training he would need to succeed in running a horse. He made sure that the boy was ready to take on almost anything that running withrode him. My parents, teachers, and friends have prepared me, either directly or indirectly, for almost anything that college and life can throw at me. My parents have been teaching me for my entire life how to be a good person and to prepare me for DOLA. They have been incredible role models and have taught me so much about like, about how to treat people, how to make sure that I am doing the best I can at all times, and how to serve others, along with many other things. My teachers have also taught me not much, and not just in regards to the topics we covered in class. I'm a member of several clubs at Thompson High School. The teachers who oversee these clubs have had a profound impact on me. Some teachers taught me how to be a leader and how to plan events and delegate. Others taught me how to take criticism and improve. And others have taught me how to be more confident and persistent with my ideas. My friends have also taught me a lot. They have shown me, a usually awkward person, how to loosen up a bit and how to relate to others better and to be able to make new friends. All these people have been tremendous influences in my life, and I'm really gonna miss them when I leave. In 119 days, I move into my college. In 17 weeks, I'm leaving my home, the town I've lived in for 18 years, or a town 1,951 miles away. I'm still nervous to leave, but I know that I am ready to go. The only thing left to do now is for me to take that jump and hold on, whether that be on a horse or in life. Finally, I just wanted to add a thank you for the honor of being chosen for this award and for all the work that you wrote, you wrote remembers to for the town. Thank you and have a good afternoon.
Hello, everybody. My name is Monica Grant. Okay. Uh, so I would like to just talk about my character and who I am as a person. Um, I can attest all this to my family and those who aren't even here today. Um, first, I'd like to tell Michael, my brother, uh, said something in his speech about me. It was kind of nice. But um, no, without Michael, he gives me, gives me a level head. He helps me through the day, so I'm grateful for him for that. Uh, my dad, nice dude, funny, funny man. He keeps me in line, keeps me in check, yells at me when I need to be yelled at. So grateful for that. Uh, my mother keeps my spirits up even when I'm feeling down. She's always there when I need her. She tries to social work me as she is a social worker at a school, but it is what it is. I'm grateful for it. Grandmother, as my brother said in his last speech, if you are all here, uh, great apple pie, great food. But I'm grateful for the love she gives me, the way she helps me through life, how she supports me, truly grateful for that. And last, my grandfather, uh, he is my true role model as a person. I structure my life, my thoughts, my being around who he is, and I strive to be the man he is today and will be. So I'm forever grateful for that. Thank you. Uh, secondly, I would like to thank, uh, for being honored to support all of you being here. Uh, yeah, thank you very much.
Next, I'm Amy Smart, our place leader of the board of members. We have Melissa Graves. Melissa Major. Michael Brandt. David Scream. And we think Randy.
That's a good night.
Eat, darling.
We're gonna take a picture with the board chairperson.
I would like to thank. Amy Jones, Grayson Marsh, for our upcoming city board representatives. Thank you. In our remaining teams, Nathan Wall, Steve, and Kate Bowles, well, thank you for bringing our moving. As many of you know, um, we had a quite big announcement last week. Connor Miller and Danny survey. We're our graduating seniors won a award for the state. From the Board of Education Department, Stateide. We also are lucky enough tonight that we're on our graduation last Friday, so we are able to congratulate the class of 23. And a big shout out to Martha, Frank, Amy, and Clark. We wrote a grant that was going to allow for a summer enrichment program for this summer and next summer. She will be doing so, congratulations. Our Julie. Is a Thompson High School graduate. Particularly serves in the most challenging teaching role in the district. Marissa, the classroom teacher of our British program, Thomas and Dennis. The British program served as students that struggled the most both creatively and academically. Despite the challenges in the classroom, Marissa had a perfect smile and upbeat attitude between the colors. She was also an exceptional teacher and has to explore professional education. Officially, Marissa was flattered, approached to roll the building of happiness on the support. Moreover, Marissa works tirelessly on the path of her students and the family's needs. The people's services department and Thomas and Dennis School are grateful to us, which is a great thing, a good thing, as part of our conversation. The wish gets submitted by the student by the day, and on Sunday, we will move it. The next shout out goes going to Mr. Aaron Denof. For his contributions involved, and the students of the Thomas King High School were in there in December. Um, if any of you were there last week, you will know what the amazing Thompson of the night was for all of us. The great show of video, the wedding scene, have a little work to.
It's so great. And what do we know in feeling this? Especially at first, we were all this. Um, one important thing because there was that change is good. Although it's time to say goodbye, same words to start something new. Definitely for us, but for you too. We want you to know that we're so proud of you, and you should be too, just so I don't look like we lost, we have the battle switch. Let me make a permit of this here. We're actually thinking this way. If I can say, like, that's okay, just because you're playing. We're gonna know you made a name in vice, vice principal. Like, and everything else, maybe yours. You know, I kind of talked about just. Oh, wait, I don't know. Oh, my God. I talked about, I see an additional opportunity to make it in that change that always started to me. This is an inferno. Speaking of, uh, as I'm sure you know, you've had the biggest impact of so many people, even bigger than you know. Um, in our final back class here, uh, with that Tuesday, we played with you, we all broke down into tears. Um, we did it again tonight. Um, it's not long since it's going on here, but it is, we created an environment that nobody wants to leave. Your room is our comfort room. Yours are, I'm checking, I'm sure it's okay. Check in on this list, give this advice, comfort it, that's what we needed your help with. We're trying so much, we're gonna just need to stretch. Inside of this stuff, um, and so much more. And touch on our lives the most amazing way, and thank you. And she's so much better than you've done for us, but we need some more work there, first. Look, guys, we're gonna get chilling, stay strong, appreciate each of you, your amazing, learning, and so. Don't let anybody ever change the way we do it.
So, with the spring news. Hi, everyone. My name is Evelyn. I'm sure Mr. B wants to reflect this. I have a few words for him that I need to say on behalf of myself and the rest of the community. He needs tonight, matter of fact, and therefore it probably matters more to him to make this. He's got the big heart, but he's getting the big arms. He doesn't like to stay with home, nor does he think that we feel like this. It was definitely incredibly difficult from the eyes. One important thing you have taught us though, is that change is good. Though it sucks to say goodbye, today marks the start of something new, a visit, not only for us, but for me too. Wanting to know that we are going to show our gratitude, and we speak to you by what you do, and what you know about this book. We need to be proud that we missed you, which makes me sad that the practice behind us, because we're just like. What we all know will make a baying vice. Like everything else, we'll make it yours. Like you and I, I talk about, I see that there was this opportunity to make an impact that always try to make, that's giving us a good feeling of building. Thinking of, and certainly of, who had the biggest impact of so many people, who've been bigger than you now. In our final day class review, we will spend two weeks, no matter when, after playing the last song, we will play you, we all burn down each piece. That alone is compelling and very incredible impact, I don't know what is. We created an environment that nobody wanted to leave. The room was our comfort room. We always prioritized to make sure women were okay, checking on us, listening, gave us advice, to comfort us when we need to hear about the violence. But when we leave behind, it's so much bigger than just know this. Friendship, acceptance, insight, wisdom, love, and so much more. We have touched all our lives in the most amazing way, because of the things. Thank you so, 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 so much for everything you have done for us. It will make me more than words can express, it must experience, grades kill it, they starting to use your amazing funny or sending stuff. Don't let anyone or anything ever take that away from you. We love you and appreciate you too much. I believe we have a big thank you to our committee. With the principal position, which consisted of 37 minutes difference members, staff, parents, students, so thank you all. I think if you need or you agree that we found.
Is the microphone working? I just wanted to see if it's working.
It sounds very, very.
We get a turn of half a little bit. Okay, um, I'm trying to pass it to Black Rock, so before we start our presentation, this is planning and conceiving, so can we look them up there? I want to go back and shout out my wife, Marissa Parks, Marissa Holtby now. I was here sitting in principle here at Thompson, not in Russell, who was a student here a long time ago, right, Melissa? And I have to say that, um, Marissa's infectious energy, positivity is the same now as it was in Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles, and it's making a huge difference that. We're calling to do a brief report tonight, uh, set up John House, I think, a lot of school, a big admission for a D from Thompson County and starting from Thompson County School. We're gonna talk about two things. Number one, our this is one extension sort of numbers over the past 70 years. Uh, and also maybe more important, some of the programs and practices and resources that are devoted to managing student behavior as well as their, um, certain. So we'll start off with this. Thank you, Mrs. This person here is, is a great. Uh, this is a session of assets, which is. And we're sorry, and this is inside the studio. Another one is a number of students in the studio. We have a lot of current here, but that's the report says is this. And we was talking about this. Uh, we noticed that a few aspects, those years that was already in the state of Richmond, learning, beginning in March. For the shutdown, you know, that. Um, some things, some things between the moments, usually. The question. The next. So the next slide is, uh, I was just about to say, some of the programs and resources we've, uh, to, uh, address this to the media. The first is a school-based initiative, right? Maybe it's similar to what we, we thought about, that's the one we were there. That, um, the premises, we've seen, it's, it's, that's here. Uh, getting into, um, into the studio. Uh, in that great law, or basically, so the person was a student, you know. Uh, gradually, the science, the media eventually was developed. They're using it to, uh, succeed in the process, pitches to lawyers, and it's a background trip, and then also we did two initiative funding. This was, one was, we saw practices, and we were about to show practices, so staff. And students, staff, training, and reserve practices. And what we, uh, came in. Um, keeping track, and then the other was, we just. And then we do that, and basically, we were assessing designs, just, uh, finishing, starting. Uh, seeing that we have feelings, I think that we have feelings, and, uh, they mix, and, uh. Not that we should, unless it needs to, um, just a federal law, we should, uh, see what they're. Um, the other two boards there are ESS. They can't just ESS, and, uh, and, uh, that's something. Off his, uh, content services. Or students who know, we can't still read. And then, uh, we see, we have a D C up, which is going to find the difference, and so to there, it's, it's, it's. Which is by, it's, uh, teaching, most of the videos.
So if you go back on slide please. So my question was, knowing in my assessment, because I said something about. To the same activity, the process versus the students. Yes.
No. Well, they're doing a rest.
Hello, I'm, this is my younger consultant, and I. Then it's towards data. Just to give you a sense of where to use. Thank you. As this is what that the first group of number ten. Lots of our uses, second, and around students finishing for year. It's not fifteen and then definitely with the numbers. So the number of students. So you'll notice that when I see seventeen, eight, six, eight, the firsts. And students. And this past year. I'll get out of school. From late eight. And you're at that time, twenty-nine persons. Since we're absolute. Suspended. But it only makes twelve percent. So what we're doing is in the school. Those are our two or three students really mean. Maybe of interest. It looks like a lot of persons. That's. The same students. Have. Issues.
There's forty-four students. Both students.
Correct. Yes. So there's twenty-nine persons. All of the twenty-nine. Days. So we even know this in the box. Of persons. Which are not included. So it's next to me. Who noticed. An increase in psych, psych condition. And we don't know it's hard to conduct. The physical. Not moving around during the night. Yes, it's true. We assume that it's amazing. Back in two thousand and nineteen, we added social worker, human walk. She had come to the. We also added the bridges program. It was included twenty, the last two year. Four students. Apparently, it's seven students following the program. Ground services, which are funding services. That were provided to students. And this year, we also added, and it's now something should have finished to be lost again. CJ R, she has a program. Therapeutic program for students outside of programs that are taught in schools. And we talk about this. So that also. Again, we like the high school and the web rock. She brought to me her. The food, the yellow programs. This year, we increased the advisory program. So not that very much, but slightly different. And then we continue to model. Swear practices. Late in twenty seventeen, eighteen, twelve years, all of us. Started by a non-servant. Were trained in several practices with the right. And vice versa. And how can it turn? That after first, a lot of it's. So. Creating that. And we also try to clear the lines. Trying to use. Please. Read something. So we. It's not a modeling behavior. It's a school, and we're going to do a little bit of this. That's just. Sure, I mean, that will recognize students in trouble. Behaving improperly and not everybody needs to assume. So we employ a task force system which is like. The students damage their behaviors. They usually play. The building with that being. Supervised. Other students. In the sand. And then I would also say that in the community. We started with that school. We can have bulletin boards and teachers on projects. We said it was black rock. You know, we get their classroom together and then it wants to stay. Because unity and marching and putting a bar work, whatever it is. Light up the town and all kinds of things. Or merely a history program that. Blowing sixth grade or senior test scores. We're talking about burning down the work right now. So kind of people are looking at it like. So I think it might continue to be able to. Great program. Right at the beginning, seeing. The games. Seven years of sand. Right now. You know, ninety-nine. Five graders.
Okay. Again, that's like so Black Rock School. I think the non-Black Rock are very telling. Really proud to say that this year, we haven't. Had the need to spend any students. And I think there's a couple really important reasons for that. If you look. Much like the other two schools, our data indicates that we have. Especially at my clock. With the exception of one year, you've had very few students who actually made. Spend it in school either. Some of those students have spent it multiple times. But I think a lot of it, I think if you didn't have the tools to manage those students or sort of the. The tools in place or all hosting programs, resources. To help those students. If you go to their cycles. I can go a little bit out of order here. First of all, Mr. Paradise said, and you can install that. Because of pandemic, obviously, these numbers are skewed a little bit. Schools are a lot different. We shut down for a while. And then they came back to school for at least a year. It looked quite different. We had restrictions, restrictions in place, so there was much less interaction between students. I'll try to get that to be that. Positive, I just. As a material note, that'd be what we do with every student every day. I think probably the most important thing that we had in place this year in addition to a new student council. We had a social worker at Black Rock. We now have a counselor. Our student counselor works all day, every day. With students who need support with their functioning. So that can be academic support, in support. Should also work very hard to deal with traffic between students. It does a tremendous amount of mediation and then follow with the parents. So that we are able to deal with small problems. Not only do you have the problems, but help students learn how to behave and socialize better. And that we don't have larger problems and we're investing in teaching shop at the school. Also, a middle awakening. The indicates. The tremendous work of our TLC programs. Sharon is here tonight. And together with the team at ESS. And by the way, TLC is the program at Black Rock School. That needs to meet our students. With almost the payers, that many concerns, not like. For the attention. We have been able to identify students who we think are going to struggle severely in school. And then address the needs of those students through this programming. And that has contributed greatly to our, our, our lack of the need for. It's really important to see. Also, to note that when you take a really, really young child, like a four, five, six-year-old child. We believe that suspending that child in school, we found that it often did not help the problem. It was simply a temporary advantage. With the TLC program, we're going to address these needs. And I'm really proud to say that. The students who have been in that program for, since its beginning. Four years and a half, right? Are not only doing well, they're finding students and returning to the mainstream of our Black Rock. So. Can't be more proud of that. Then the last thing I want to mention, now that's not on the slide, and I. After we go to the presentation, is the expansion of our PK program. Right, so. We are, we have four PK classes now. We service the needs of almost all PK students in Princeton. I think right now we have eight or ten students coming into kindergarten next week. We're not in a pre-K program, which is a very small number. Not only are we keeping those kids in pre-K program academic readiness to school. Also, it's important that the behavior readiness of school as well. So I think we're seeing it's coming to kindergarten. We're looking at a K three program. We got. Much lesser behavior needs. So. Just I want to highlight some things I think that really helped us. Our suspension rates. The speaker. It's not clear before last year, we had those five students. Are they still in this year and mid-year? Was that a result? Kind of saying that they. It's a good question. I don't know specifically on those, but I would say a combination. Right? Some students have moved down to center school. And are receiving intensive services there. So we see a couple of different things to answer your question with that. We have students who demonstrate more intensive needs when they're moving to kindergarten pre-K. And I mean, other students begin demonstrating these things, different behaviors later on. Second, third grade. So. In some cases, we've been able to identify kids needing support later on. And those students are receiving that support balance. I know whether they're staying to the depending. Well, actually. I just hope it's, if it's beneficial to the school as far as attracting of those students to help maybe. Give the additional attention that might be needed. It's something obviously not public. Right. Something to, to impress and. Yeah, yeah, sure. And the partnership we got through like the, between TLC and this program. Assuming, although it's not my school. Bridges and path program here at the high school. But particularly TLC and bridges, that's really helps some of these kids. You never know when kids are going to start. Having major difficulties. Partnership. Thank you very much.
The next season, preaching is our smart balance. Evening, everyone. Good afternoon. In fact, of the professional instruction assessment department. To give a huge shout out to the teachers. Their profession. Plus, of course, that we would have been, we would not be able to do this. And we will only convince them. Assessments such as what indicator for before a child. And using the thirty seventy days, there are other ways that students show the fact. And maybe just one. So looking at our math scores, we're in last couple years. I think that is straightforward. Marking others are needing to be or proficiency in certain things. We have seen increases in number ways, three. Four. Five. And seven. It's a lot for the jerks. For how just succeed in the. So the draft scores, what the last couple years. We have seen increases in three. Four, seven, and eight. With. The base increase eight percent in grade plan. Shout out to the same name as well. And we are discussing, well, this is not long, this is down. And raise six. We're not concerned about it. Because we've not seen any progress. Increases in their proficiency scores. We've seen increases in the world. But we're severe raises. It'll be really, really useful. So maybe this is why I'm using myself. What would be raised in addition to them? And we hope that it's the only thing that we're not doing. For our science. Science increase in rate plan. Every single year, so shout to the sort of. And Ray eight has been consistent. And even more than a percent. So, weight eleven has been a challenging thing for my. It's obviously based. So greater line takes the G S F. And on the backbones, students are very focused on the success stories. With them in college. And so, I was kind of transitioning with this. About ways to maybe improve or encourage our level of students to be better. One way we thought about not getting that is mainly that we're from graduation. That would be. Want to get improved. However, another way that some districts have been able to encourage students is maybe to have a seal. On graduation, the point where they want to be proficient. In their science. That way, the courage to do better than you. It's not that we don't have a ability. Like, in my opinion, with that, the back point would be different. It's a focus. And so, the smart balance. But then it's just not as simple. So we want to get ways to encourage those students to. To show proficiency, because for many of them, only going to. Some college majors, that may be something that would. Or, and actually, the third way I thought of as well is just to pass out a reward. At graduation, it makes the efficiency sound and everything. So there are many ways you can encourage students. To show the. But that's just a part of the world. My next slide is moving the already data. From the center school. Black Rock and Center School, unless somebody knows that should be. This is not. We're going to go into how we. But she just explained sort of where the difference between. Growth in the hands and stores of students. Because achieving a growth rate, we don't know what that means. Not what's supposed to happen in store. Or like certain levels. They may not remember the last. Right, so growth is that year to year. So how, how much students are growing. But it's not that they're going to stay where they should be with your percentages. And I already know from one of the way, who did you not know this more than us. What we saw here is the source on the individual. Freewards. So we're looking for proficiency in level three or four. But students can grow. Giving you without reaching efficiency. Without.
Two strings back. Anyone who's going to seem like there's. This kind of best. Is that, is there something that's attributed to that?
I'm just excited to do that. Honestly, I mean, I'm thinking about that. That was the first two of them. I think that we. We just don't want to get any nerds to be able to be. The communicator of the return to be best practices regardless. How students perform. We implemented a last summer destruction record. And then. That was different, so.
It seemed like. As far as what grade they were going to be based on the year. Again, it's.
Again, it's still.
Yeah, uh, what I should do here tonight is not put order, is that we're not same students here, maybe we can do that as well. Um, but these are just pretty, 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 not, not the same students. In addition to this, I'm going to. Being the already diagnosed, to measure some growth and growth. The diagnosis for those of you that are not aware, within the rest of the chapter, we're going to bring to you. It's the way one is equal, one is one to, and one is the same. And it says there are, there are some things to make, there are few things. People that are interested in this data to be useful for us. Relating to the type of work, it is why I support students. And because it's been three times, three times we need a relevant, four times we need a separate. We can measure student, you know, and their progress towards their future. So what we did is, um, they're looking at the already diagnosed data. We look at, um, if there's a three level performance scale. So you have tier three, just students who are performing below grade of the measurement of expectation. Tier two, students who are approaching, and they just have a grade level expectation. And tier one, our students who are currently performing beyond the, the expectation. So what we're looking for in assessing the data from the beginning of the year, to the end of the year, and then end of the year, if we want to increase the student betterment to, they're performing on a great level. And we want to give you things in the future. So, and, um, we're trying to debate about a couple of times, but it's, um, a map, tier one. Which is the first slide, which will show the growth from office to room. We'll start here for tier one, um, being taken. So, um, the data with blue bar from the graph shows beginning of the year, students at tier one, so these students were performing great, so we don't. The numbers too well, but if you look at grade two, there's about thirteen percent. Thirteen percent of students that were in the tier one were performing at a little bit greater than expectation. And then at C nine, the diagnostic, about sixteen percent. And this is, well, definitely, I didn't see that at a school at very local, increased students that really need support. So we really need students, and, you know, they're talking about the place that most of our people there, so we think, and we're in the year. All students are, so even if they're belonging to the one, which is one of the grade level. These students are students, and that's four hundred and four within with the diagnosis. And this is our tier three data. So the first, the blue bar shows the percentage of students who were below grade of the measurement expectation. And the red bar shows the decrease, we feel that we were performing under grade like expectation. So again, if you look at the third grade. So the third grade level, we had about thirty percent of students who were performing low grade of expectation. In the beginning of the year, which we reduced to fourteen percent. And that number is still a bit brighter than you'd like to see, and as we get to the after steps. Um, the third one, the implementation of bridges, so our science is basically simple intervention.
Moving on to our.
Right, again, this is very close to senior, I do second step of day three seven and students will expect to schedule for the next school year. Great schools in the last day's school, we thought he truly said this is not a school year until the polls, students really want to take the impression of me.
For class, many clubs voted in twenty twenty two authors, especially thanks to the catering club, student council, and new proof of the end year of everything support. Such a many catered buffer papering one for these past few days. All clubs are set to the next school year, preparing for other things. And especially thanks to senior care finer captain that gave senior graduation work to celebrate the artistician change of the club over the years at graduation. For athletics, all sports teams finished out the top four since in our PIs in state. Congratulations to all states of Athens from the hard work of the year and committing your best with the class team.
For special events, as stated earlier, seven things in seven, style trip, the traveling dog, the trip to England, France, something to the coast of the Caribbean, sports are working on the east, South at Lake, it's southern, it's in sixth, the generous local business is going to the worst of thirty long different seals. Lastly, congratulations to the team and a great school career and good luck in future.
Thank you very much. You're finally working on just like a girl who may start about the catering floor. The primary classes and the catering club that see the catering for the guests all during last week and the food, it was amazing. The silver is what I'm making. So congratulations to you. You have a motion to the board with this?
February, both through three, the senior people who have broken tennis and basically position the starting line.
That can happen. Those are good. Congratulations.
So probably not a senior today alongside our verification faculty and staff, students, community members. This has been a wonderful opportunity to meet everyone's community and I was so honored. I will echo that. So good evening, I am the student committee period. I am your consultant officer in high school. For this amazing staff, for like the students, I said, I'm here tonight since students truly admire relationships that are constant and still in the relationship. So shout out to the staff here that seems more agenda for right now. I'm going to go over some data and key points that I took from student panels, interview panels, and conservative goal. Discuss my focus from school year, my attitude step. Sharing a little bit about the culture, I reflected back on my last presentation, if I give them a better, some of the shows, my why and feedback for anyone that would like to share. Next slide. So my focus for this upcoming school year is to focus on culture and climate, rebuilding that for our students and our faculty alongside our community. The data that I reviewed to determine my focus is looking at our Vanna Academy survey, principal survey, as well as live testimony that was shared from our students, faculty members, fourth year, and. I added this to the presentation because I found it very required to include parent voices well. Over half of the one hundred and two respondents to the parent survey shared that there were five criteria that they would like to see interact with. One being effective communicator. Two being some of that had higher success as a classroom teacher because a critical part of being a strong school leader is understanding the goals that we want to achieve within classrooms as well as staff. Looking at somebody that's approachable and is willing to listen, actively listen, genuinely listen, and be responsive to the feedback and support our staff. And then lastly, they need to maintain that power. Making sure that our faculty and staff stay in this building so that they can continue to help our students grow. Next slide. A big key takeaway that I shared and noticed as looking at concerning results is that many of the priorities of the staff and faculty are very similar to that of parents. Someone that has classroom experience, a full classroom experience, being an instructional leadership experience, being a professional mentor, being a time communicator, and being able to raise names and talents and to improve these. I found that this side was very powerful because this is potentially what I heard from many different people on panels. And every time I left the panel, I, you know, reflected myself on that on date and I said, oh, there were some things that I remember I heard and saw I was like, listen. And here's some, we want somebody that supports our staff, our emotional health, someone that's transparent, someone that can trust, someone that understand would like to be employed in a small community, support a small community, somebody that is passionate and engaged in the community. And number one, somebody that's transparent. And I need a few faculty and staff, you know, around my community because the transparency is so clear. They consistent that this is what we need in a vast school leader. And so that is my role to foster that relationship. These numbers were retrieved from a principal survey result that amounted to the entire community. The first two bullets, I'll speak to them and now we're talking about the others. Eighty-six percent of teachers here feel safe. Ninety-five percent of them feel safe because of the practices and the programs that they have in place in their classes. So that's a huge impressive number that I thought really is because of the work again that this staff has to do as a school. So when we talk about culture and climate and building that, first place you have the absence of lack of safety. And that's never right there. So then I saw the second people list is that this is where my focus is. Thirty-three percent of our teachers that come from high school feel supported, very small. Then we have twenty-three percent of them, you know, there are programs and packs in place to foster that. So my goal and focus is to increase those numbers. And there's three ways that I've wanted to look at. The first way is to develop and implement a open classroom program. What this looks like is that it's going to be for teachers to utilize their professional experience, go into other classrooms, teach a different instructional strategy model, bring them into their classroom the next day. I will organize a physical calendar so that teachers have autonomy to set up their classroom for a couple minutes, incorporate supervision in place, and then they can retrieve the instructional practice. One thing that I remember as a teacher was the kind of confessional development and seeing, you know, I want to take something, say, and the money is being given to the starters tomorrow, the next day. And this program offers that for. Number two, this is full improvement. We invented this into a previous decision that I worked. It's nice because everyone has a shared way. This is an opportunity for a group of colleagues to get together and discuss areas of clarity, areas of improvement, and what we can do here at Congress and High School to make not only our work experience better, but the experience better for our students. I completely suggestion back with anonymous. So even if somebody can't physically participate in our team meeting, they have an opportunity to go and do. And I think that's very important that that happens. And then my third action plan is to continue providing support. Support looks different in different ways. We have teachers that might have resources. We might have faculty that would like to observe and see happening at places as they prepare them on materials. This includes sitting in our department meetings, providing accessibility to facing guys, looking at curriculum documents, looking at our data and seeing where our students currently are performing, where they can come, and how we can get there. It also includes understanding where our coaches are coming from, going to their classrooms and providing some models to their instructional training, being able to facilitate smaller so that providing that reinforcement experience for all persons, as well as folk communicating. Again, all of these programs are voluntary, practices complete are voluntary. So depending on the staff comfort, their contributions, where they would like to feed their own classroom growth, these are three ways that I can do that for the person. And then this was the slide that I added. There was a young man that was sitting behind my last presentation. And he said, this is all great. What about? And I said, you know, you're right. You have a very good point. So I conclude this. This is very a small snapshot of some of the events that I came to a corporate area of class in high school, back to school kickoff celebration, meeting rates with our family and meeting members. Then the map of organization that actually calls kinder. And again, back to earlier points, teaching our children a program to be visible school and how they can stay in the rest of them. And that's what we need to do that has to organize here as we need to do. Well, some work for any office to get our students back in the building and be excited to be back to school. And it can come an opportunity to decorate the building that's been constantly fit. They don't have to be included here. That's the way to get them to thrive, right? And then always recognizing our student strength as well as our. This focuses on how I'm out there, the actual growth of the culture, looking at the beginning of the year, end of the year acceptance that I was minister, looking back at those in our Vanna Academy from strength twenty-three to strength on board to ensure that I'm making growth. And then the importance of continual request. If I, by the top of the leader, are continuing to reflect, then I can model that for our staff, which means as well, and these are definitely. This is a little bit about myself. I have been employed in small districts, made a professional career. That was a link of my employment for being a teacher and both a coach. I have a very deep lens of understanding what faculty needs, teachers need, as well as what initiatives and how we work together so to make progress. And so with implementation with open class approach and support, I'm able to land my own night vision so that staff wants to stay here at Congress and Maxwell and our students want to communicate to school and have a meaningful conversation. And this is where I go through feedback. I, I mentioned it through our code, please give your feedback, comments, questions, concerns. I want to echo the same thing that I've heard most in high school from our students. You're excited about the bunch of myself and your control. I'm excited to be here. But of course, working with our adults and seeing as faculty and the norm of education, it's critical that we continue to foster relationship and build in the classroom process. So we continue to do the work and thank you for the time to hear.
We'll be posting this case where this presentation online so that anyone who's speaking our code, who want to give feedback and still be able to just say, sorry, they. So we also did another was the winner of the winning the advanced scholarships that I was honored to declare of that. So congratulations. For our progress report, I want to give a question to the board to talk to. Thank you. Do you know anything to explain this? I feel like I'm seeing the answer to this. That's what I can do for stocks as well. They're all on one pole. You can't see them on the view of CNN. Who's going to make her on the agenda? Oh, okay. All right. We get to the top of the entire agenda. This is the problem. So this is our decision. The way this needs to sell is see what's in the books. Oh, it's. We have a lot of students. I'm on the table.
Hi.
Close. Let's see. That nails it. Now it says zero, that we date a lot, I see. Any other questions? What was the name?
I got it.
Go look. Why we not be swearing in popping for forty minutes, but we have less than ninety minutes. Landon and Megan, do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as student representatives to the Princeton Board of Education to the best of your ability, so hope for God? Congratulations. Yeah, this is the community board. My report contains four statements that I'm so excited for. Yeah, so my several reports are current events of community highlights. And I'm hopeful that our last school in class is going to be the end of the season. The central school Chinesia for profit topic includes the last hundred and fifty percent of the community started working today. I'm thinking this is very exciting. Okay, and we also received preliminary funds maybe from the state saying that we have received, we ought to say when we move grants, which is probably at sixty, that are going to be taken. Blackrock School Blue May Club update includes that we are having teachers in that name. We have one extra day this year, and one extra day next year. The extra day this year, we should have a fair room. And they actually, they actually have to finalize it. Because we have to completely vacate the building in order to do the assessments. The town toss and solar exploration timeline report includes an update where we basically there with select net with energy up, which is a company that is used to find solar vendors. And they met with the city itself and we were suddenly determined what it is that the most important potential for products are supporting. Would be targeted for our court sources being placing already solar in our rooftops. So take that a little bit of information, if we're looking back now, most of the big specifications that they can go and find that has to average. They also seem to have regular not just to follow vendors work and we are receiving the demonstration of the two vendors that had lost everywhere as the months ago to have the sets and found that they were very, very glad that we tapped them out before. And based on this information, the Blackrock School air hand was brought to the board. That's a new report. And Eric was on the top of Blackrock School that the town has decided funding to replace and go repair. And we are in a process of value initiative for leaving on that seat and see the load. Wait, put it on and boost up his on that way. And also the, the CTO sort of announced being really servicing and providing some security that will do the scare others. We'll see in the report that there are concerns because whenever those in their name was reversed, you see, they were not set out above them. So there are rules and reasons for that depending on season. And that's because it was over service. This space is longer than this. So we're looking to set those properly. So we now came down with smaller air handlers that technically burned and fishing. Lastly, the principal survey report, which you can see some of the information is moving forward on today and everything that's. The administrative reports are included here. One of the reports also. Contracts, employee and vendor contracts that are in an executive, not grants that are officially yet. So the grant fee loyalty is officially in, that's the promise to the heat. That we fish those. And under general information, we have four contractors that were approved. And so we want to personnel, personnel, we have fourteen. Transferred new assignments, some of which have multiple successive associations since we have been on. We have no reservation for parents from Asian families since our last meeting, but we do have a new cycle, which is nervous. I ask for the voter vote to acknowledge my organization versus.
If I would be able to acknowledge the superintendent communication personnel office, the community has cancerous requirements, presentation very much setting for us to follow for people personally, as in fact, quite in addition to the employment.
It would be a very good idea. Very long as they can get. So I was just thinking about having staff. We need extra needs. So we can open that up. We'll take a look. We'll see if I can pass this off to see if you're ready. See, this is. I try to see as long as we know, we need your time. It's time for your keep in mind. The feels. Well, those are better.
Hi.
Those. I'm asking. Next part of the report, we have one, it was your question, and we have one, we have two days for today and watching the days, the April eighth, April second, the fifth, twenty twenty four, the order needs to prove by us to the second, it's going to pass.
If I like your musicals, it's definitely true. Maybe watching DC filter. Maybe for second, maybe for fourth. That's over second.
Look, Mr. Well, those are better.
I got it.
What was? The last part of my report is the sales and disposal of those that are in the spot, trying to come with your requests. So like, we think that's very working. Moving on to our community board. Just let it go and try to do that. I'm going to say. There was. Today, and then we're looking at Japanese and present the use of open courses. What is this? The guy that turned into this. I'm sorry, I want to. Yes. One sixty-seven to ninety-five, we know that this is the age of the Paris, Jacqueline, deficit. The deficit is supposed to be covered by confirmed bullion to the. I asked the board, I asked the board to please establish improvement because it's by the equipment centers as intended.
Steve Carr, motion to set approved business and finance for expenditures for policy three four three two slash three four three three, business non-instructional operations budgeting expenses for us in your financial statement presented May twenty twenty.
We're out of the second. I want to clarify that. The kids of staff and others, the air handles is part of this. And there's air in this classroom that is in the beginning. It's an air in the product. That's what I think. So if there's anything. Well, those are better. I. Words.
Hey.
Thank you.
Very exciting thoughts. Today for budgeting, it was a very quickly, again, in the first week, second week, we're actually.